I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
ESAC County Schools empower all students to become productive, responsible citizens of an ever-changing global society. We'll take a minute now for public input on non-agenda items. Okay, we will move on to the secretary report.
So just looking at fund balances, they're kind of continuing to grow. You'll see with the bills this month, the management funds is going to come down finally because we finally paid our insurance premiums. Otherwise, everything's looking pretty good. I had a conference last week for three days, the Fall SBO Conference. So met some people there and learned a few things. So that was good.
Any other questions? All right. I don't believe we have any correspondence, so we'll move on to administrative reports.
I'll mention it's Dr. personal.
Yes.
We just have our fall screening, our FAST assessments. So we administer those three times a year. And so I've included the literacy and math data with comparison to the schools that are in Prairie Lakes AEA and then the Iowa Department of Education, so students in the state. So the top one is literacy and the bottom is math. So you can see just kind of a little comparison there. One thing, we also have data meetings then, so we did meet as teams because we break this down by grade level. We break it down by student because this is the percent of students that are at benchmark for that grade level. And you're seeing system-wide data there. So we obviously break that down a little bit deeper. And I kind of put a little blurb on this in there, but our goal is obviously 80% of students at benchmark. And you can see we're much closer to that in math than we are in literacy. And so our, a lot of our goals, our goals this year are really focusing on literacy. A few years ago, we were actually identified as a school for math. The work that the system has done has obviously been the right work. And so now we're doing similar work and just digging deeper into those ELA standards. We did celebrate though, and as you can see, just in comparison to the other districts in the AEA and the state, we were higher than them, so that was a celebration. So we were able to celebrate that and then obviously ask, you know, now, now what do we need to dig into? Lisa Keys is our MTS coordinator, MTS-S, sorry. And so we went around to every grade level and both after the meeting, she and I were just both really impressed by the teachers and just getting really good at using their data and digging into and asking the right questions and figuring out then what are those tweaks, small things we talk about, what are small things we can do to have a big impact? So overall, we're moving in the right direction and we've continued work. So we also have, part of that would be our attendance and behavior data, so we have teams that are monitoring that as well. Part of our system is learning, we're now using a new system, Panorama, whereas last year we used, for several years, Swiss. So it's reporting it a little differently, so we're going to be figuring out how we want to maybe adjust our goal based on that. So that just kind of shows what that little chart above that was telling me. So our attendance team is already, we set letters to students. We, Heather's kind of been leaving up that too, we're meeting with students who are at 15%. We don't have anybody yet identified at 20%, but we'll just continue to monitor those new changes for attendance and following, following the new policies with that. So and then behavior, again, we continue with same thing, we have interventions in place. So our goal is to have 80% of our students that don't need any extra instruction and 10 to 15% that have that targeted and then the 1 to 5 that have intensive. So we're there with math and we were there last year with behavior, so now we need to get there with all math, literacy and ELA. And attendance. Other than that, I just put in there our playground recognition events, one of the nice events. And it was nice, we had the opportunity to recognize Julie Clayton specifically, obviously all the donors as well. And Julie was able to make a little special mention of the two football throws that have been donated and every two by some community members. So those families were there to enjoy that. And then PD update, just continued work on kind of some of the things I was talking about at the first with our data. We're really working to dig into their standards, identify what's priority and aligning it to what are they going to be tested on on the state assessment? So and that's a big part of our professional learning community process, that just that continuous work. So we just continue to dig into that and so the teachers are doing, enjoyed really well with that. And then parent teacher conferences, our goal is to meet with 100% of our parents, 100% of our students' parents. So currently signing up and teachers are actively calling to make sure parents have time. So that will be coming up next week. It's kind of crazy.
Any questions?
I can tell you that Tedesco's have signed up for their time.
Very good, thank you.
For the junior senior high report, so like her FAST data that she has, I don't have all this compiled yet because we just did it last week, but we just had our map testing, which is what we use to look at reading comprehension, math and science. Here's kind of a precursor to ISASs. And I mean, we had it, we did do it two times last year, we're going to try to do it again two times this year. Hopefully, when we get all that back, we can kind of look at the numbers and see how well kids have grown or not because it's really kind of a growth model to look at, see how well the kids are going with those three areas. I saw a lot lately, the things that I like to see where there's some class projects, students get to kind of be a little more creative or get to do some things that maybe have a little bit of real-world application to them lately that I've tried to highlight on the Facebook page and other areas there. Just recently, we had our, a good idea from our new social studies teacher, Noel Bachman, that have a project for government classes to do where they have, they ran like an election basically and started within their own classrooms, having primaries and going through. And they have some pretty outlandish things that they're trying to put out there and I've had kids going like, we really got to do this? I'm like, no, this is just for, this is just for them for the election. Some things I've got to say to some kids as they're doing what politicians do and telling what you want to hear to get your vote. So we had some good talks about that as well, but it ended, it ends this week. They had a little debate we did on Friday with kids, both the Kennedy and Asher did a great job talking through their points that like I said, are a little bit outlandish, like having the food truck here instead of having our school food and some other things that I was kind of like, oh, sounds great, but then only in theory, right? Until we have to pay for things or whatever. But they did a great job with that and really ran with it. I like how much they got into it. You can still see their posters all throughout the school. And personal finance, this is something they do every semester where they have mock interviews. I've sat in these a few times, I kind of like doing that and some of the kids think it's like added pressure if I'm in there too, but you could just see the pressure they feel in the hot seat there, going through interview questions just in front of their peers. I think it's really good practice though before they do that in real life. And they got pretty well dressed up for it too, getting some of those pictures. We had our first choir concert of the year and with our new choir teacher, his first performance of the year. I thought a pretty ambitious undertaking that he did with the selection that he had, but the kids sounded amazing and it was a great first choir for him, first concert for him. Yes, with conferences coming up next week, like Becky mentioned, we've had our teachers set up and reach out to as many families as they could with doing advisor-led conferences again. I think it's a good focal point and if teachers, if parents want to go talk with other people, with other teachers, they can set that up as well. But I think this one kind of gets you more into your career goals and future plans, which is good to talk about with your grades and how well you're doing here as well. Our CTSOs, FCCLA and FFA have had a lot of different activities that they've been doing lately that I think you can see. Numbers-wise, we're doing really good on making, having kids go out for those groups and being involved too. So like, I know with FCCLA, Steph was telling me that's the most she's had so far, but it was 20, I can't remember the exact number of kids now, 28, 28 kids that went to the fall rally there. And then some of them were involved in competitions and did pretty well with that too. And I know FFA tomorrow morning will be having the Nationals in Indianapolis. And like I said, he's got pretty good numbers, but when you go to Nationals, it's usually just the officers. But there are a lot of good involvement with those things too. Any questions or anything for?
Thank you, Bill.
All right, that brings in my report. Becky mentioned, we had the playground recognition two weeks ago and we had a really nice turnout for that. We honored Julie with a plaque that I haven't been to her office, but I was told it would be in there. So it was, it was just a nice night to recognize some of the people that had donated and hadn't, hadn't come up and got their individual picture yet. We took some of those afterwards. I'm just thankful for the community's support of that project. So again, that was, you know, a $477,000, $477,000 project. And the school district spent about $350,000, so we had over, right around $120,000 to $130,000 donated from our community and that was awesome. One of the things we worked on last week around here, we are going to upgrade the capabilities of our phones here in the, in the, in the district. Soon administrators and counselors will have voicemails where parents can call and leave us a voicemail. Prior to last week, that was not a thing, so we upgraded our capabilities with that. And then at some point, we will also go to automated answering program where if you want to report an absence or reach a secretary, you'll push one. If you'd like to speak to the administrator, you push two. If you want to speak to counselor, you push three. It'll streamline calls coming into the district, especially in this building where we have two phone numbers for one building. It'll help people be able to get where they want to go without a whole bunch of holding and transfers. So. Safety grant updates, we, Robert and myself have been working with vendors on getting a lot of quotes. We need to have that money. Not so much spent by the end of this year, but we have to have a plan in place and how to spend the money by December 31st. So we've had a variety of vendors come in the building. I think the majority of what we're looking to do here at ESAC is upgrade classroom entrance doors and locks. Both buildings, you'll, if you go down our hallways, you're still going to see turn handles. Our, our goal is to upgrade to ADA compliant handles and then easily locked classroom doors from the inside. In the last couple of years, there's been kind of a change from, a lot of schools did the key on both sides. You had to have a key to lock from the inside and lock from the outside. What they're finding is in the event of a crisis, a lot of people, they lose their fine motor skills first and have trouble finding keys and then getting it in there and get it locked. So they are urging schools to put in a mechanism that can be easily locked by anybody whenever it needs to be locked. So that's kind of the way we're, we're going with that and we'll see what's left over. Judging by a few of the initial quotes we got, there will be nothing left over. Just doors and locks for this building alone, with no insulation, the quote was right at $100,000 just for the locks and the doors. So it's expensive stuff. Certified enrollment. We certified our enrollment on Tuesday and I'm going to report that the district is down 42 students from last year. As mentioned in the last board meeting, we knew, we were expecting this to some extent. Going down 42, I think was an unpleasant surprise for any district our size. What I have found out talking to other superintendents, there are several other schools our size that are also down kids. Just in the Twin Lakes Conference alone, of the 12 schools, I think 11 of the 12 are down. So we're seeing less kids in our area right now in general. And then when we graduated class of 73 and we have 40 in preschool, 40 or 42, however you want to look at that, that's where a lot of our students, our enrollment drops. So with that, you know, down 42 kids, there are budget implications for the future. But I think it'll be the boards and my and Tyler's job to proactively plan ahead so we don't have to be reactive later. And I'm prepared to do that, so. And then the principals talked about conferences next week. To me, this is just a great time to connect with parents. I think as school district, when working with parents and kids together, will be more successful than just working with kids. So we need our parents to sign up for conferences, come in and be involved in their students' education because if we all are working towards the same goal, generally, we will achieve more. So hope to see 100% attendance in both buildings. And I know both administrators over there are going to work hard, even if we don't see that on that Monday and Tuesday, to follow up and get those people in so we can talk about their kids. Any questions about my report?
Is that everything you've got?
That is everything I got.
Okay, I'm just checking, just checking. He has more slides, so I wanted to make sure. All right, so I don't think we have any discussion items.
There are no discussion items this month.
So we'll move on to action items, so we'll start with the consent agenda.
So I wanted to mention or explain, we've got September bills on there and October bills. And I think what happened last month is we had the board packet going around and it ultimately got sent out with August bills in it. So in this packet, I've included both September and October so that we can make sure we actually approve the September bills.
Any questions on any of the consent items, policy, foundation member approval?
I moved to approve, approve the consent agenda as submitted.
Second. Motion and a second to approve the consent agenda items, all of those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Next up is the approval of the IASB delegate.
Lori Kluber has volunteered to attend the IASB School Board Convention next month in Des Moines. And with her availability to go, I would recommend that she represents ESAC County as our IASB delegate down in Des Moines.
Sure, Lou. Second.
Motion and a second to approve the IASB delegate, all of those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks Lori for doing that for us. All right, next up, we have Kathy.
Yep, so Kathy Schmidt is here tonight to talk about our LAW Plan. We approve this annually and Kathy spends a lot of time making sure that we are compliant and serving our kids correctly. And she's going to chat with us a little bit tonight about that.
I'm Kathy Schmidt, I'm our VSL coordinator and I also work with our fifth and sixth grade reading intervention students. So the LAW Plan, as Katie said, is something we need to review and update annually. It's called the LAW Plan because of a civil rights case in 1974. So on our 50th anniversary of the LAW Plan being in place, it was named after an individual who had moved here to the United States from China and was attending school in San Francisco. And it was determined that having teachers, having classrooms, the facilities, the materials wasn't providing enough for students that have limited English and these skills. And it went as far as the Supreme Court saying, this isn't enough, we can do better for students who have limited English proficiency. And so it has become called the LAW Plan, which is basically our language instruction education program handbook that we have in place. Serves two main purposes. One is it tells anyone coming into our district how to identify someone who qualifies for the services. And then the second is, once they do qualify, it explains what we offer, what can we do to help someone become more proficient in their English skills and also keep them moving along academically, hopefully as close to grade level as possible. So it's a fairly lengthy document, there's a lot of things in there that we need to comply with. There are things in it where we have some choice. When I say some choice means what best meets our students' needs. And that may look different at a small rural district like we are than what may happen in other larger districts or based on the pockets of population that are in the district. So in our district, we are doing mostly what I would call pull out and push in to support students, meaning I either pull them out and work with them in smaller individual groups or I push into the classroom and might sit in an ELA classroom, for example, with a student and help them with things that the content teachers do. We also have a little bit of what is called sheltered instruction where classroom teachers have strategies to use to kind of scaffold the instruction to help them know what strategies they can use to support a student that has limited English skills. It really begins when the students enroll. We start with a whole language survey and that's actually given to all families of new students. So if they come in as a preschooler, they get a whole language survey. Or they move to this district from another district, it's non-discriminatory. Anyone newly enrolled in the district gets a whole language survey. Within that are the questions then that help us identify if we need to screen. There's standardized tests, much like they've talked about with ISAS and math. There's a standardized test that the state gives us called ALBA, English Language Proficiency Assessment, testing four domains, reading, writing, listening, speaking. And if the students are not proficient in any of those areas, that shows us what they're going to be offered for support and then what parents will have ability to help them. So that's kind of in a nutshell what's in that document. At the end of the year, Nate and I review the program, we do a review of what we've done, what we might improve on for the year. We have a committee, we have the handbook so you can see. We have a committee of teachers, administrators, instructional coaches across different grade levels and content areas to help provide feedback and input on what we do with the program. The enrollment numbers have stayed fairly steady. We had quite a bump a couple of years ago where we went from less than 10 students to right around that 20-ish mark where we're at now. I say 20-ish because some of the students moved in or out and you have some that are in services and some that are considered part of the language instruction program, but they exit once they're proficient. And we still monitor their progress for a couple of years to make sure they're academically successful and if they need any other support, we provide that. So we're right at that 20-ish number. We do have students that speak a variety of languages. Some districts are able to do a bilingual program because they have a large amount of popular students with a common language that we do that we are pretty spread out. We have languages of Spanish, Pompeian, Trukeyes, Tagalog. This year, we have foreign exchange students, was something new, needed to assess foreign exchange students and provide support. So we have German, Italian, other languages that we're supporting. So bilingual wouldn't work well for our district. The few numbers we have in each of the bilingual languages. That poses a few challenges to identifying supports for students in their native language. Spanish is pretty common, we can find a lot of translated materials, it's easy to translate with some of our technology that we have. But when we get into Trukeyes and Pompeian, we're a little stretched there on some of these. So it takes a little more intense support to provide them with their own services. One of the things we were going to get last year in place and we're really utilizing it more this year is Language Line. Hospitals and a lot of government agencies will use this, businesses will say, it's a service we can have that we call the number. We have a Language Line company, we let them know what language we need translated and interpreter pops on the phone. We could have the family sitting with us on the speakerphone in the room or do a three-way call if they are off-site to connect with them. I've heard lots of people we have from different people this year.
Which is really easy to, yeah, to use it, so yeah.
And it could be anything from Jackie Renzi as the nurse calling to say a child turned on the playground. It could be talking about the attendance policies, sharing grade updates. It'll be available for teachers during conference time as well. So if they want to sit down with a parent, the parent comes in and has some of their English skills, we can bring those translators and interpreters on board, we pay pro bono on usage for it. So it just depends each month. I think we've had two months bills that have been together, maybe $30, $50. So it's been pretty important. Something new this year, I guess I mentioned just briefly, we did have to test for exchange students that has been something that's, as I understand, it's been in the expectations, but not been forced in the state of Iowa. This year, they said thou shalt do, so we are, and we're offering support as needed for our foreign exchange students. That was something that is really, it's probably a good practice that if they need some support, not punishment, it's not a consequence, but some of that can just be a cultural difference as well as language that we can help to support. So it might help with a history class or it could be helping with writing a paper, getting a presentation. Looks more like academic support than a language class for them. Something new we were able to offer this year with the math testing, it was available this year in Spanish. So we had two students that took advantage of doing that with their reading and their math assessments. We'll be anxious to see how that looks. I know we have some raw scores, but how that falls into it, I'm not sure. Kind of nice opportunity for those students who were more of a newcomer to Spanish as a native language that they could actually assess in content. Next step, simply just carry out implementing the program throughout the year, touch base with the committee for updates and feedback. At the end of the year, like I said, Nate goes through the checklist with me of things that we need to evaluate the program. We have a fight for Title III grant funding even this year, we have that heard yet. That was just required this month to meet the deadline, so we don't know results of that yet. That supported some of the things for us last year, like the timed kettle earbuds, where students can wear earbuds and they can listen to the classroom teachers in English and it translates to their native language. So it gives them some real time translation. We've been using iPads more with some application apps that can hear some of that. We did the backpack program we started last year to engage some of our elementary, our parents of our elementary students with some materials that could go home in different languages. Did find a few Trukeyes that I ran through Tyler this year with our title grant and some of it did get some children with Trukeyes and Pompeian resources to send home. So we can engage our listeners for representation.
How does testing work for those other languages when it's not Spanish or English?
For the other languages, if they're truly a newcomer, meaning this is their first stop in the US school, they can be exempt this first year, kind of like the math testing, they can be exempt from that. Otherwise, the directions are all we're able to give, we can't paraphrase them, but we could give directions in their native language. They have this other same type of accommodations other students have. They have no time, they have extra time to finish, but we can't sit down and translate a math test for them. Certainly not the reading, but even when you go maybe in math or science, people can only translate directions. We did have a number of these tests off this past year. At the time when we do our testing, again, like the test they have because they're screening, they do a spring test called the SOLID, they get that same type of test. And a third of our students this past year tested this provision. Do you have any question? I could be chatting Captain, focusing. What questions do we have?
If you don't get funding, that title grant you were talking about or whatever, like the earbud things you're talking about, are those something you have to send back or do we get to keep those or was it paid for and?
Basically, it's a reimbursement. So the ones that we were able to get this past year, we didn't purchase until we got the funding saved for this year. I've requested more in the grant again this year so we can get more as, I requested four sets, so we've added another set at elementary, middle school, junior high and high school. If we don't get that grant, then it would be a conversation that we have a different budget to try and provide something like that with our enrollment numbers, if you might even need that.
Well, I would encourage you to come back to the board if you do need something because this seems important and money shouldn't stop it. I mean, to, you know, some extent, so.
I appreciate the support that US the board and administration give on the program. We're going to be able to do things through the board. We wouldn't be able to do things with the pockets.
Any other questions?
Nope. Kathy does an awesome job. You guys all got the document in your packet and it's a comprehensive document and she does an awesome job with it. So, I appreciate that.
I guess all that's left is to entertain a motion to approve that.
So moved. Second.
Okay. Motion and a second to approve the district ESL LAO Plan. All of those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you so much. All right. Next up, we have personnel items.
Typically, we do these together. So, for resignations this month, we had one associate resign. She's moving across state and pursuing a degree in social work, right? And then a few contracts offered. Marcia Sample as a cook, Jocelyn Sumlin as a cook, Amanda Hanky as an associate, Sienna Johnson as associate, and then Bruce Ackerson, this is, he's going to have kind of two roles with our district. He's going to be a route bus driver and then also at nighttime custodian with the hours left after driving bus.
Questions, comments, otherwise I'd entertain a motion.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the personnel items. All of those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. All right. I think lastly is our meeting time, November eighteenth.
Yep. That would be the third Monday of the month. I am available that day.
Professional development days, isn't it?
It is a no school day. It is a no school day, PD day.
Me, does it work for everybody else schedule wise?
That's fine.
Okay. So, we will be six-ten here?
That would be good for me.
Okay. Six-ten here in Lakeview. Any future agenda items anybody knows tonight?
Are we talking about the, are we doing that softball, baseball thing?
Last month, we talked about a discussion, discussion on junior high softball and baseball adding that. Been talking to Mr. McCully, he wanted me to hold off a month. We, we believed we had coaches for those positions and we just need to revisit that a little bit before we move forward to make sure we do have coaches for those positions.
All right. If there is nothing else, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries and we are adjourned.
Thank you everyone.